Recording in progress.
Good morning and welcome to Osceola County Committee of the Whole, like all meeting order. additions or deletions to the agenda. Under item P various items, we're going to delete item number one. Looking at that recorder of what's accurate, so we're going to consider that next one. At the next meeting. Are there any other additions?
Motion to accept the agenda as a number?
Second. Discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close, no. Brief public comment?
Just to comment that when we get down to the finances, we can have a discussion.
Any other public comment? For your board comments? Consider rule of minutes about October seventh, two thousand twenty-five.
So, second.
Discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close, no. Unfinished business, health safety ground. Question for Karen.
We did a health safety ground yesterday. We had discussed RFP for Sowol County Building. After reviewing the two bids, actually three, that came in, we decided that there was more sort of cost savings. So we just go ahead and continue this with our current situation. One other update is that we did get cameras up and functioning in the blind areas in courtrooms, stair walls, stuff like that are up and running.
Great. That works. Great, let's move on to new business. And that's your extension.
How are you doing tonight?
Good.
Good morning, everybody.
Good morning.
Celebrity guest here with me today. All right, he's saying, uh... He's on one of his high chairs.
No, it's fine.
So we'll start off with our annual report. And I brought, I invited Jake to talk a little bit about the forest and then I'll throw some other pieces in the annual report. Just, they were pretty hot off the press, so I just shared those with him this morning. But happy to field any questions and it'll also be posted on our website after, so. Jake, what's your work for here?
Hi, yeah, 2024 was great year for me. We were growing, we had three hundred and sixty five enrolled youth in our program. And our highlight was our private world education days, which is a partnership with Farm Bureau and some of the local farms. We celebrated our twenty-ninth year. But due to the eighteen ones, we had to move locations, so we actually had an outright gas old county federal. So we had all four public schools plus three Lutheran that done last year. And we had a wide variety of speakers. And some of my highlights were we had to be an R actually return after a two-year absence because of the rent of that yard and the new plant. And then during my traditional forest clubs, a couple of new ones this past year, we had for the first time parts of crafts. Because of the lessons of our youth and our leaders and families, they wanted more hands-on activities. So we had four forest clubs come together and host a one-day event with thirty-five youth. And they did nothing but crafts. And that would include dipping dots, bead artists, mother crafts, stuff like that. So it was so successful last year, we ended it again this year in the fall. And then during the 2024 year, we did a pilot of chicken embryology, where it was a short-term program for eight weeks. We partnered with Matasa County and that way if a youth missed the day here in Osceola or Matasa, they could come up and be at the same time. We had eighteen youth participate where we grew from ages to hatch chicks in our office. And so even the seniors, COA, and you wait to come again and see where we're at, the day we're at.
Cool. Yeah, the forest continues to be a very strong program. Jake does a great job over here with the kids and it's always, it's always refreshing to see the opportunities that are created through the forest program here. And then just to talk a little bit about some of our other programs that we offer. Obviously, the MOA will walk out after this, support supportive program coordinator in some of our office needs. But we also unfortunately, as we interviewed, the SNAP program was sunset. That was a thirty-year grant, federal grant. And that was, Elwery came in and presented a talk with us, I think it was August, September. But that program was sunset. And so we did take a pretty significant financial cut in our organization. It impacted about ninety-four staff total across the state. But, so pitch it in here, getting some of those, that information. We are doing our best to try and fill some of those, fill some of those gaps. But for 2024, a couple of the other programs that we were offering, obviously, I've talked very much about the farm trust program. That continues to provide services in terms of malhealth awareness, suicide prevention for the cultural community. So we still have a health therapy program. Anybody that talks to farmers knows they don't have any stress unless you actually talk to them and then you realize some of the stresses that are in control. There's factors that are involved in farming. So that program continues to provide services to residents. Like I shared before, the best testament to that program is if you're not reading, the farmers are the paper. So, but Misty, Misty Oval is one of our farm trust educators and provides services across the county. We also have the master gardener program that I've shared, we're trying to bring some energy back into that. So now we have through the joint multi-county partnership, along with our institute partnership, have a person that's housed in our district. And so she's providing services to me as a rock and is good bringing some energy back into that program. Food safety, I know one of the Carol mentioned our food safety educator. And she does, they do a lot of different programs in person and virtual. I know one of the big things right now is like food preservation, it's hunting season. So a proper canning of medicine, I think, is one of the big pieces that she's been covering. And then also highlighted in this report was Kristi Demme. I know she's been over at COA a number of times, working with the different, she does high she, diabetes. She also has relax, which is like a mindfulness program to help with some acre management. Not so much necessarily there, but they also have spiritual classes that she provides services to. So any questions on that? I know I'm just kind of fast and furious, but happy to field any questions if there are. If not, we'll move to agenda two, two, whatever it is. So it makes you really excited to share the MOA. I hope everybody had an opportunity to read it. Obviously, the extension tries to do a very good job of being stewards of, good stewards of the investment that the county pays. That said, Tim knows there was a lot, there was a flurry of emails and conversations. Something I've been working on for very, essentially since I started this job, we, the community has shared that they want to have another Ag educator, right? Another Ag educator. And so in addition to the standard pieces supporting the forest program, Angel Smith, who was our office manager, accepted a different role. As I shared, with the SNAP program being defunded, we essentially only have Jake in that office right now. I didn't feel that there was justification to support just Jake with a point nine FTE office manager. And so what we were able to do is negotiate with the other institute to access an additional dollars. And so as you'll see embedded in this MOA, it would be a support to bring in another Ag educator in Osceola County. It's an increase of about three thousand dollars. That'd be point seven, or point five seven FTE Ag educator, Ag educator, the other master doctoral level staff that would be working, obviously, right here in the community, providing those services that we wanted for a long time in Osceola County. So I think that the next part of it is, if this is supportive, we will, then I'll, I'll reach back out to our institute leadership. It's probably a little bit confusing if you're not in a system where you have four institutes that we work with. And they leverage different dollars outside of, through like state, but through Smith-Weaver. And that's essentially how we're able to support this position if the MOA is adopted. And so other than that, it looks very much the same as if they just shifted that position out. And then we'll see where we get. And in the future, we may obviously need some more support staff. But this is an opportunity, I think, for us to capitalize on maybe some of the negatives, but very positive, a positive play back into this county, so.
My first would be like Jerry's role, will he be an agronomist and doing soil samples and feet testing and all that?
Yes, that is, that is the goal. And they may have some different pieces, right? They may have different areas of expertise with that, but we need the primary, that would be a primary function of what their role would be.
Any other questions, Jake or Jerry?
Yeah, I have a question. If I could get a chance to remember random agreement.
I'm sorry to say you did or you did not?
I did not.
Okay.
Because I'm having technical issues with my email right now, my computer. So, we owe, and can you tell us what we paid last year out of the millage money?
Yep, last year, direct contracted with, to extension, it was one fifty-nine twenty-one. This year, they ask us one sixty-two five fifty-four, or five forty-five.
So you're just, you're asking sort of approximately three thousand dollars more?
A three thousand dollar increase from what last year was, correct?
To help pay for additional education?
Yes.
How, I'm curious, you said there's four institutes then?
Yep. And so like, kind of, we did like a cross, in the annual report that I shared, like there's a cross sample of like the different institutes that are impacted. So we have the Health and Nutrition Institute, that was like the SNAP funded program. The community, I'm sorry, the Children and Youth Institute. The Master Gardener would be the Agriculture and Agriculture Business. And that would also be the institute that I'm partnering with or trying to partner with to get this Ag educator. Then we have the Community Food and Environment, which is like those, they kind of have, they call themselves the Swiss Army knife because they do forestry, they do waters. But then they also have like, it's called the Product Center, where they work with businesses on campus, doing all kinds of different research and product development, distribution too.
So are the institutes funded by the Michigan State endowment?
No, no, these are, they would be state and federal dollars.
So there's state and federal tax dollars that help pay for these?
Correct.
How much endowment money do we ever get?
So we get asked this a lot, but endowments are a little bit different, right? Because you have, if you have an endowment fund, they are typically earmarked specifically for X, Y, or Z, whatever that might be. So if you have an endowment that was specifically for forest and the Children and Youth Institute, those are what those dollars have to be spent on. So a lot of times we'll hear and see press like, oh, MSU got three hundred million dollar endowment, right? And those a lot of times are specific to like maybe researches on campus, they might be earmarked specifically for sports, right? I think those are some of those different things. So sometimes it's difficult to weave through the actual funding pieces themselves from the university. But these are dollars that we can, the Smith Weaver funds are typically the ones that support land-grant universities, IMSU extension. And so we had to wait, I'm sorry, I need to carry on.
No, you didn't, and you're doing a great job, I appreciate it. I didn't need to cut you off.
Oh, no, and so part of the reason this was still kind of hot off the presses is because we were waiting essentially for some feedback. Obviously, with the government shutdown, we're still waiting on some of those federal dollars. But with the state budget essentially being flat and the post-secondary area, we were able to get support by the, by the campus agriculture and agriculture business institution to help fund this.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question. If we agree with our endowment price, nine hundred and sixty-two thousand, how much does our village currently generate? How much revenue?
We have some answers. Mr. Lad can answer that for us.
I have the twenty-nine left here. I'll look and see if I do.
Well, our corporation director looked it up for us.
Thank you.
Oh, I didn't, I didn't know where you need to see.
And I guess in addition to that, how much surplus do we currently have on in fund that? I don't think how much fund balance it has.
Do you remember what it was? I mean, I could run a report, but I did say that to you.
Because we've been trying to track that up, and see if next year we will be up for millage renewal. And so there is some, there is some fund balance, I don't know exactly where it is though. I'd have to look that up, but that's something we can, we can share. Financially, we are sitting in a pretty good space though, with that respect.
I can answer that for you if you'd like.
Oh, yeah.
Looking back at the email. Beginning fund balance started the year with thirty, a little over thirty-five thousand. And at the date of the email, which is in September, if we were to have closed the year at that time, we would have had almost sixty thousand.
Beginning of September?
Yeah.
Okay. So we're going to be plus sixty-some thousand by the end of the year? And then did we find out how much are?
Well, that's, that's if we had closed that day. So I'm not sure if all contract expenses had been paid yet, so maybe there's another portion.
It appeared there was one, you know. And do we know? I'm still curious how much that generates per year, what it's projected to generate next year?
Just a moment, please.
And the reason I ask is because we approve these millages annually, I believe, how much of the millage we're going to collect. And I think there had been some discussion in the past that we might be able to lower what we collect in the future. Eric, our millage is point five, is that right?
Uh, yeah.
Point two five.
Yes.
Maybe with point two.
Point two four seventy was the.
After that?
About two hundred and fifty-six thousand five hundred twenty-two.
And projected, we spend under sixty thousand?
Well, there would be some additional costs for our facilities too. And so I have to.
So it is an hundred and sixty-two thousand?
Well, that is, that's a different, that doesn't come right out of this MOA. That is like indirect payment for our, for our rent. Adding that the.
The indirect cost? Indirect cost.
So there would be some. And I think the other, the other piece is that.
Indirect cost in number. And I cut you off, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Almost thirty thousand.
Thirty thousand, so almost two hundred thousand.
Yeah. And so that also gives us an opportunity though, like obviously, we're, we're in a millage renewal cycle. But that does give us the opportunity to, you know, when we go back, assuming that we're supported, be back on the ballot again next year for renewal. That does give us a little bit of platform to potentially continue to grow and expand in this area too.
Or reduce the millage.
Or reduce the millage, yep. Could be, could be one of the directions, right?
Thank you everyone for entertaining my questions, I appreciate it.
Great, this time I guess you'd be looking for a motion to accept, approve the MOA with MSU.
I'll hear it, I'll second the motion. Go where you want to go.
Motion by Karen, second of the motion. Discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close, no.
Thank you. Glad to see that posting coming soon then. Appreciate you being supportive.
Thank you for your services. Building Inspection Department.
Thank you, sir.
Morning.
Morning, gentlemen.
Um, Mr. Lad, a question that I do have. Building Department out the eightth ballot, while I finally run through some things real quick. Some of the projects, we got a lot of the bigger projects. Most you probably know, we have a tractor supply and Evert coming in. At this point, they're fixturing the building, hoping for a final inspection within a week or so, get opened up in two weeks. We have the DG Grocery here in Reed City that's just about in the same position. They're fixturing the store and threw all their rough ends, just waiting on the finals. Hoping to get opened up by the first of November. I received fourteen sets of plans that are on my desk that I'm starting to wade through for six new apartment buildings and renovations of the existing buildings at the CDAH Apartments in Evert, which is going to be a good project, especially for the winter. Going to keep us busy. Evert is also putting in a little over three hundred new water services next spring. Going to be, keep our plumbing inspector busy. We have a new hundred and ninety-six foot cell tower going up on US ten, just issue the permit for that. I talked with Chris Hoff from the Hot Ash, Michigan Hot Ash, the other day. He's expecting, they're expecting a notice to proceed in the early first quarter of 2026. They're out on site doing a little bit of layout now. He's not projecting any kind of heavy dirt work to start until the spring now. They were hoping to get started this fall. He said they're still doing a lot of finalizing in Washington with the banking system and all the monies. They're didn't play a process apparently. Leroy Tool and Die is in the process of putting on twelve thousand square foot addition, basically doubling the size of the facility up there. The marijuana grow facility on sixteen mile road, I just filed out a new, another six, sixty by two hundred building. And they informed me that they're coming with plans for five more, I decided. We have received zoning and soil erosion for a biggie coffee up here on two twentieth. But I haven't received any plans yet, so I can only assume there's more coming. We have this fat splash pad here in Reed City going on. We're actually doing some rough in inspection of that house today. The billing permits as of Friday, we are at three hundred and thirteen building permits for a total of one hundred and forty-five thousand four sixty. Our mechanical permits, we've issued two hundred and ninety-three for sixty-five thousand six hundred and fifty-four. Our plumbing permits are at three hundred and three at fifty-seven thousand four eighty-five. Our electrical permits are at three hundred and forty-eight for seventy-seven thousand four hundred and forty-two, which gives us a total to date of three hundred and forty-six thousand forty-one dollars we've brought in. That puts us at about a hundred and ninety-seven percent of our budgeted, what we planned on this year. The billing, billing permits are about twenty-seven percent over projected. Electrical, mechanical are ninety-eight percent of projected with two and a half months to go. And our plumbing is at a hundred and ninety-seven percent over projected. What we have to take into account, all the city water services we did in Reed City, there are a lot of, a lot of permits there. And our soil erosion is at seventy-six percent of projected. But it's just a quick overlay where we're at, I don't think you make any questions, if not?
I, I have a question. Do you know where your fund balance is?
Three eighty-three with, with assets, three forty-three without.
And what's your projected budget on, I mean, part of those expenses?
I would have to pull that out, I don't remember.
You're at almost two hundred percent on three hundred and eighty-seven thousand? Okay. I, and again, I ask any question. I think we discussed this before, are we to the point where we might consider lowering billing permit fees?
That's not, that's not, that's not a question for me, that's a question for you, I don't set prices.
But it's something that you and our administrators should consider if we ever, I mean, you had a one-time influx of federal funding for this water project, so that kind of stews up there.
Right. Yeah, it does. And you don't know from year to year, it's like anything else. So do you cut the department, just because we're doing good, do you cut us till in three years, we're struggling?
Right, which is what we don't want. But we want to be aware that we're not money taking off that, we're providing a service for whatever we lost.
Aaron, are we, are we making any, because my understanding is that we have to have in reserve what would be a one-year budget. Are we coming real close to that in reserve for a one-year budget?
Yes.
Okay.
So we're pretty good for now?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Let's move on to some COA items.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I just have two items. One is a purchase service agreement through area agency and Osceola County Commission on Aging. I'm asking for a board permission to have county chair sign that. This annual agreement, and you've probably read if you have it, is an agreement through AAA area agency based upon their contract with state of Michigan to provide services through care management and Medicaid choice waiver. Once they do so, and we actually provide those services, that's how we can get an agreement through area agency to build on and get paid for our services.
Just ignore it.
Is it here either?
Our motion to approve.
Discussion?
Are we getting very close to the same service that we got on the last contract?
Any other questions? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Close, no.
My other item I have is a contract through, with Brevell Township, the village of Tustin, to utilize the community building there as a meal site for the Commission on Aging. The contract was drawn up by county administrator. It was sent to the, both the boards of the village and township. I attended those meetings and it was discussed at the meetings about those, about this contract. Both the township and the village both approved this. Both the township and the village both approved this contract. Minor changes were put in there to include the village of Tustin as the main, the really ones who do the billing. This contract would be through, starting November one through October thirty-first, November one twenty-five to October thirty-first twenty-six. Um, first billing would be in December first. It's for forty-eight hundred dollars a year of monthly billing, so a hundred dollars. Contractor's first drink forward, as it was written, it does allow us and them to agree on thirty days' notice. And our intention for it now is to utilize this site for a meal site. And depending upon the participation in the meal site, how many people come and how often it's open. If it takes off, like I hope, then we have a meal site much cheaper than what we had before when we had Sportsman's Club. If it doesn't, then we'd have our due diligence to try to keep up. We won't sell it up in the North Coast.
Your motion to approve is presented.
Second. Thank you, Ross. You have to second. Ross, yeah. Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Next will be the land and sale of annex property.
As some of you are aware, the property where the annex at, there is a neighbor who is interested in purchasing that. So I did reach out to the state land bank because of our restrictions in selling property where we receive grant money. And I had to do some reporting and in the packet today, we did have a letter from the state land bank approving the sale of that property. Um, so once it's sold, I do have to report that again. So it is county-owned property, it is not land bank-owned property. So you follow your own purchasing policies that you have and at least you probably have to give this or however you handle that. But the state doesn't approve selling that, so it's at your pleasure whether you would like to move forward and have to try to sell that land. We are able to do that now if you'd like. Any questions?
Yeah.
Okay.
What property?
Uh, is the property where the annex sat.
Okay, I thought that's what you were talking about.
And did I read it right, potentially some proceeds from the sale may have to go back to the land bank?
The way it works, when I was doing the reporting, we'd have, we had to get in a value from the appraiser, so, because it hadn't been assessed. So we got a value from the appraiser, you put that in, based on what you sell it for. Anything above the value, then you would have to give back to the land bank. It appraised right around twenty thousand and that's probably what we're gonna pass for it. Um, there is something in the grant that says if you make above or below five thousand, you don't have to give that back. So if there's additional, if we sold for twenty-two, we would not be providing it back. If we sell for twenty-six, we'd be required to give some money back.
So my next question is that lot that sits, Kenny Corner, from the annex property.
That's one by the city. That's that, oh, the lot, Kenny Corner, oh, okay, yes.
Was that land bank?
No, that is, that is county.
Okay, because I know that, that occurred a lot of years ago.
Yes.
The county ended up with it because of the fire that occurred there at that home and then they sent their vehicle for a long time.
Let me double check that, now that you say that, I, I don't think it was, no, it's definitely not. I know it's not.
Okay, all right.
So it's definitely not.
That don't have any bearing if we wanted to try to sell that lot also?
Correct.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Any other questions?
So if we sold that separate lot and sold it as a package deal, would we break that?
I would think you'd wanna have two sales, just because that land, that.
To keep that separate from the land bank.
Yes, to keep that separate from the land bank, because of the reporting we're gonna have to do.
Okay.
And are we gonna have to, when we sell that property, leave an easement to the city property that's in the back?
That's probably a good question to counsel.
Okay. Because I know you can't sell property.
It's already an in-law.
I, I fully understand that, but if we're selling it, I didn't.
Yeah, yeah, I would ask counsel.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, let's move on to some various items. Mr. Land.
So every year, two years, we put out an RFP for purchasing wall paper. Typically, the last, uh, two years, so our office put the RFP out and based on the results, we are requesting that you make recommendation to accept purchasing two hundred and thirty-five cases of paper from Integrity Business Solutions in the amount of seven thousand seven hundred forty-seven dollars and ninety-nine cents.
So move?
Second.
Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no?
And on the fifteenth of October was the bid opening on the two vans that Justin had approval from the board to put up bids. The bid opening again was on the fifteenth. The high, the high bidder, there was, uh, I guess on vehicle, what was called Vehicle One, two thousand fourteen Dodge Caravan, then number ending in fifty-one. There was two bids that came in on that, a little bit was one thousand five hundred and one dollars. A high bid out of Chicago by Chicago Motors was two thousand fifty-seven dollars. The second van, then number ending in fifty-two, there was three bids that came in on it. Little bid was thirteen hundred and one dollars, the next bid was thirteen hundred and seventy dollars. And the high bid again from, out of Chicago by Chicago Motors was one thousand seven hundred and eighty-six dollars. So we're looking for a recommendation to accept the high bids from Chicago Motors and to authorize county clerk to release the titles.
I made a connection.
Should we do this separate? Which one or this is?
I, I think together is fine, given it's a seller.
Discussion.
I'm curious, how we get Chicago Motors to make a bid, and that's your question.
I have the same question, so when I talked to Jody and Linda in the office, they have apparently bid on county vehicles in the back, so they're, they're on the list of who we send the information to.
Good job, thank you.
They have purchased, if I remember right, through the Sheriff's Department of Vehicles.
Was there a connection through, originally through Enterprise?
No.
No?
They've been purchasing vehicles long before we ever got into the Enterprise country.
Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, let's move on to probate family court items.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I have three contracts that are also applicable today. Um, the first one is our Child and Parent Legal Representation Grant, or our CPLR grant. This is funds that we received from the states of the reimbursement grant. So this year, they have approved us to receive ten thousand dollars in attorney fees for the lack of a few weeks to replace and foster care. This money is to be used to help with extra legal services for quicker permanency, so kids can return home quicker. I don't need a, I don't need a signature, I just need a word accepted for this.
I would make that offer except for the loan, I'll second.
Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no?
Our second grant is for Regional Detention Support Services. This is another state reimbursement grant that's a renewal. Um, it started October first, but with the state budget, it took us a minute to get the actual contract in play. Um, this is a three-year contract, so we would receive forty-two thousand, up to forty-two thousand dollars per fiscal year for services like our home, our house arrest program, our in-home detention, electronic monitoring, and transportation services. I don't need a signature for this as well, it's just an acceptance of funds.
No, I'm all for it.
Let's move over to that one, Commissioner Weaver. Turner, you gonna provide the second?
Mine.
Okay. Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no?
My third contract is our contract between the county and our Saginaw County Jail. This is for services that we use for our older, more serious offenders that need to go into placement. Um, this is a renewal contract, we did our first contract last fiscal year. Um, the only difference between this contract and last year, they did increase their prison rate from two fifty to three hundred dollars a day. Um, we only, like I said, use this service for our higher risk offenders that we go into placement for. I don't need a signature for this.
Motion to approve as presented in the board chair's side, second.
Discussion.
How many do you figure in years that we're gonna put in there?
Um, I don't have a crystal ball. We currently have two are already placing after this year. Um, and there are going to be longer term cases, because there are labor cases for the adult world. Um, so we, I, I would probably guess five for the year.
Usually when we put them in, they're all longer than ours.
Um, they could be out between six months to a year, depending on the situation, depending on the charge.
Any other discussion?
This does, this does go through our childcare fund, so we do get the exact number.
We can check that.
But.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no?
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Next will be the Finance Committee, October seventh, two thousand twenty-five meeting update, Mr. Custer.
On October seventh, Finance Committee met. We discussed the proposed budget that was put in front of us. As far as the proposed budget, we were well in agreement with that, but we also had, we've had staff increases and wage increases that we wanted to bring back to the board. And eventually, so that the board had to say, and we didn't feel as a finance committee that we should make that decision. This morning, there was a budget that was put in front of us that showed where we would be in, as far as the budget. If we were to approve what they had right now, we'd hit a hundred and twenty-six thousand five hundred and seven dollars and twenty-four cents in red. Also on that paper, you have expenditures that was not.
In the black.
In the black, in the black, I'm sorry. Scared everybody, didn't I? Also on the, on your paper in front of you, you have expenditures that were not accounted for in the budget yet. If we approved them, if we approved the increases that we have on the paper at the end of the year, we would be in the black, ninety-five thousand nine hundred and ninety-four dollars and forty-nine cents. I guess with what we got on here, we need to finalize the staff changes request. So I guess what we're gonna be is to find license ones on the paper. I don't think we need to jump on that just yet. If you want to get into your discussion right now, I just don't get into discussion right now.
So, like I seen the paper here, and none of the sheriff's departments requests are on there. Does that mean they're already in the budget accounted for?
No.
No, okay. Do you know why they were excluded, or?
I guess that was up to the ones that put the budget together.
The, the Finance Committee then, or?
The Finance Committee, with what we had with here, was what was brought to us. Like I said, we didn't, we didn't finalize any staffing changes because that's coming to the board. But what we have on the paper, what we have on the paper here is what they, what they presented to us to approve.
Well, I, I think we did, uh, put a couple requests in, and we did present that, and we talked about it earlier, uh, about wages and, uh, I believe for the, uh, our clerk. So I thought it was a wonder, why has somebody from, from this?
My understanding is that, and I was part of the Finance Committee, Mr. Gray, read myself, Mr. Custer, that we were somewhat at a standstill, and we wanted to bring this back to the committee of hold to make discussion on several, or a handful of, uh, items, which one was the, um, just?
Well, they're not out there.
Well, I, are you referring to this paper that we received this morning? I think this is just for discussion. Do, this, Mr. Director, he correct me if I'm wrong.
Just a second, Mr. Land, go ahead.
So the treasurer and I wanted to give the board members an option to look at, at what we felt as far as staffing change request was appropriate based on wage studies and talking with a lot of the department. So that was the only option for you to look at, to consider. You still, you still have all of the staffing or request changes that came in through, you know, the clerk, the front of the court, the prosecutor, registered deeds, the sheriff's office, the treasurer's office, uh, veteran services. Those are all still on the table for discussion. All, all I can say is, the administrator and working with Finance Committee and our treasurer on the budget, we've already had this discussion at the last meeting, is if you accept all the staffing change requests and part-time positions to full-time positions, we're gonna be four hundred thousand dollars in the red. And if that's what you choose to do today, then we'll, then we'll go back and try to put that budget in the black somehow, but there'll have to be other cuts made other places if you want to do that in wages.
And on the agenda packet, if everybody looks, that's gonna be one sixty-two. There's some additional stuff, staffing requests. That Mr. Land just spoke with five departments.
And I would like to offer, and it doesn't have to be all or none either, I mean, that's why we're here. My understanding, bring this back with me to hold and then let them know what the sticking points were and, um, offer some, perhaps, compromise.
This doesn't need to be determined today.
Do you have to set the elected?
The elected official needs to wait.
Today. But the rest of those have to be set by November fourth, I believe, and you won't meet against it till then.
No, but the staffing changes, that does not need to be set today, right? That does.
Really, the only thing we need to set today would be.
The elected official.
Please.
But at some point in time, soon, we need, we need to get the budget moved
Oh, yeah.
So your options are go through the list of the staffing change requests and, and based on your recommendations, either support or no recommendation, and you move through them one by one. And if we end up in the red, you'll have to allocate money from the fund balance to make the budget black. I don't personally as, I work at the District of the Board, but that would not be my recommendation to do that. I think it's always in the best interest of our taxpayers and the residents we serve if we have a budget in the black. We've been successful doing that the last four years. And we've seen the fruits of that labor, we've seen when I started here, a fund balance of a little over two million to where it's grown now to eight and a half million. You're moving in the right direction. And we are, we've made substantial changes on wage adjustments in the last four years, I believe it's been about a twenty-five percent pay increase for everybody since two thousand twenty-two. We're trying to do what is the best we can to get people where they need to be. It's hard to do it all at once, I think we all can agree to that. But based on the list that we put in front of you this morning, we feel those are the, probably the immediate needs if you were going to make some adjustments this year, just on wages. And that has nothing to do with, uh, the sheriff's office, the records clerk, that they would like to go to a full-time position, who's currently part-time twenty and out, and the prosecutor's office requested their part-time position to go to full-time. Again, we understand the need for that, but you're going to have to, as the board, determine, you know, it's, can we do that on the budget to make that work? Okay.
Looking at the minutes of, of your guys' last meeting, I, you know, you had the discussion on, on the Treasurer, the prosecutor, the registered deeds, all those four positions and about the three point seven to forty hours, we, plus you had the under sheriffs, uh, concerned about the lieutenant making more than the captain under sheriff and the sheriff. And that they had their concerns. I, I remember when I first was sitting in on these meetings, um, a year ago, and these were brought up, uh, last year. And, uh, and now here, here we are a year later, and these concerns are still here. I, I don't know how we cannot go another year without looking at some type of bump in their, their wage.
We're setting the rest here, everybody getting five percent increase this year.
Everybody gets a five percent increase.
Yeah, but there's no, we're not, we don't have anything on here that's, that's included. It's, it's not showing anything on here that we're even talking about it.
Talking about what?
There, there's no discussion that, that it's included in the budget on here.
About what on here's?
But that's, if I can interject, that's why the Finance Department, and I didn't feel that Finance Committee should deal with all of these individual requests as just the Finance Committee. Because I wanted the rest of the board to be able to weigh in on the rest of these decisions. When it comes to the personnel request that was requested, which is this page, it's also in your agenda, I thought it was important that the full board actually happened and put up. If we would have dealt with it in the committee and went through all these staffing requests, you would have only seen the staffing request that the committee felt to move to the Committee of the Whole. So some of the discussions that we had in committee would have never been heard here. So that's why I made the motion to bring the budget with the staffing request to, to today's meeting. So the full board can set up all of these staffing.
Can we list them? You have a list, what was asked?
Yeah.
Let's, let's put down one by one.
You've, yeah. I can go make copies.
It's actually in the agenda packet. So if you look at the agenda packet on page one sixty-two, the administration, executive assistant, increase from grade nine, step eleven to grade eleven, step four. And then you move to the clerk's office, elections, add two hundred dollars per recent stipend, ninety-two hundred dollars for clerk and chief deputy programming each election. Chief deputy clerk, increase salary by twelve thousand, one hundred and ninety-seven dollars and fifty-nine cents to align with the wage study of sixty-three thousand, fifty-two dollars and eight cents. Clerk, increase salary by five thousand for non-union early voting responsibilities. Position had prior increase in January of two thousand twenty-two of five thousand. From the court, assistant FLC child support specialist, increase from grade nine, step eleven to grade ten, step eleven. Child support establishment specialist, increase from grade eight, step eleven to grade nine, step eleven. Position had prior increase in July twenty-three from grade seven to grade eight. Custody parenting time specialist, increase from grade eight, step six to grade eight, step seven. Increase enforcement officer, excuse me, enforcement officer, increase from grade eight, step five to grade nine, step six. Position had prior increase in July of twenty-three from grade seven to grade eight. Prosecutor's office, assistant clerk, change from part-time to full-time. Victims advocate, legal assistant, change from hours from thirty-seven and a half to forty. Registered deeds, chief deputy registered deeds, change hours from thirty-seven and a half to forty. Registered deeds, increase salary by five thousand. Sheriff's department, administrative assistants, record clerk, change from part-time to full-time. Jail administrator, increase wage by five thousand, six, oh, excuse me, five dollars, increase wage by five dollars, point six to four two an hour. So it'll be eleven thousand, seven hundred and forty-three thousand dollars annually. Sheriff's department, increase salary, sheriff, increase salary by five thou-
Fifty-three hundred and twelve dollars.
Yeah, I've just, I gotta make sure it's accounted out of the desk. Sheriff, increase salary by five thousand, three hundred and twelve dollars and eighty-eight cents. Position had prior increase in January of twenty-three of eight thousand, two hundred and twenty-six dollars and fifty-three cents. Under sheriff, increase wage by three dollars and five cents an hour. Six thousand, three hundred and sixty-eight dollars and forty-subs and nurse, add permanent part-time position at ten hours a week. Current, two thousand twenty-five grades, twelve, step three, on anniversary, in two thousand twenty-six to step four. Treasurer, deputy treasurer, change one position from full-time to part-time at the end of February of two thousand twenty-six. Deputy treasurer, change one positions' hours from thirty-seven and a half to forty. Chief deputy treasurer, change hours from thirty-seven and a half to forty hours a week. Veteran service director, increase stipend from three thousand, six hundred to eight thousand per year. That was the staffing request.
I would suggest that not discuss those step changes until perhaps next meeting, but address the more pertinent budget issues, especially the elected officials, that has to be addressed today. I think that's correct, time-wise, yeah. And, um, there's some other things we can address, the thirty-seven and a half to forty.
Which is what was shown on the sheet that was handed out
Right. Right, but we, we, I agree a hundred percent with you, our, our thought was bring this back to the whole, Committee of the Whole, to some of those issues because they should be discussed, and I agree totally. I didn't agree with a five percent pay increase. So that, that should be discussed, I think, Committee of the Whole. If we reduce that two and a half and we compromise on some of the elected officials, and there's some ideas here. But anyway, I'll let you, just a suggestion, that we hold off till maybe next meeting on step changes, because that'll be pretty tight concern.
So you, you just want, you want to delay it, to bring it back to the Committee of the Whole, or do you want to take it back to the Finance Committee?
Well, I think we should discuss it right now.
You think we what?
We should have this discussion right now, for, especially the elected officials, you know.
Well, we've got to, we've, we've got to set, we've got to set the non-union employee appointments before the heads and elected officials' wage decrease now. Because by November fourth, we have to have that in place.
Right, and so we know we need to do that. And the other thing is, um, the board needs to be aware, if you're not already, that there's, because of state statute, we have to change hourly deputy cost to salary up. Am I correct on that?
Yes.
Okay, so that probably should be
And that was, that was already on the paper that was put in front of you. That has already been adjusted.
Well, okay, um, if you want to hold it off until the next meeting, fine, huh? Well, I'm just talking about the steps. And if that's a bad idea, tell me, Mr. Land, I mean.
Well, I don't think we're getting very far on the budget if we're to just push that off to the next meeting.
Don't be mine.
Well, we still have to discuss elected officials.
Right, but that
The Sheriff's Department
We can actually take care of the elected officials real easy by just setting that wage. We can increase it, but we cannot decrease it.
And we had discussed the onset, on you and the elected and the non-unions at five percent.
Right.
So i- is that agreeable with everybody? Can I have a motion on it?
I think the motion, we accept the elected official without a move. And appointed department goes to five percent.
I have a motion on the floor, any discussion?
It was so, maybe the whole. It was so, maybe the whole.
You, you lost your authority.
Good.
I don't want to go out there.
So I believe that if I have this right, who, it was Commissioner Turner, and seconded by Commissioner Eber.
Correct.
To approve setting elected officials and non-union officials, non-union staff at five percent? So non-union employees appointed department had elected officials at five percent wage increase. Ross seconded it, so we have no court discussion.
Discussion, we're doing all non-union employees right now?
We're doing everybody. Pretty much, right, straight across the board?
At five percent.
At five percent. The elected officials
And that was already budgeted in this, in this part.
Yeah, we're doing everybody.
Hey, Mr. Chairman, can you clarify, I one more time, motions were all
The motion gives a five percent increase for all county employees. That'll be elected officials, non-union, and the unions have their contracts.
And that's out, we would, I'm sorry, you haven't asked for a discussion?
Yes, I did. Go ahead.
Um, so that would then clue out we address our elected officials. And I would like to interject, I had discussion with the clerks off, I, I tried to discuss, had some discussion with all of the elected officials, I think I got I think I got them. The clerk, since she was first elected, since that time, now has to do a ninety-day a ninety-day extra election, possibly, what, three times a year? Which puts a lot more work and burden. I, I would like to make a suggestion, um, she asked for a five thousand dollar stipend or in increase, but I would like to suggest that perhaps we consider a five thousand dollar stipend, not a base pay, but a stipend, um, which is similar to what we do with the treasurer, and have that money generated by the council from the service charge we charge, which would, so would make it our county budget to be neutral.
So we would say on the same
Excuse me, that topic is not related to the motion, it's on the floor. We're discussing the five percent pay increase.
Okay, so does that mean, if I approve this motion, the elected officials get a five percent, you don't consider any?
No, it does not.
So we go back and discuss that?
Correct, what we're doing is establishing the pay increase for two thousand twenty-six. That's the motion that's on the floor right now.
Oh, I would also
Just, let me finish if I can, please. Then, then we're going to have to deal with all these other staffing requests, individuals?
I would also suggest, um, that we don't give the elected officials five percent, but we somehow come up with, uh, we can listen to what they have to say as a whole, so and again, my other point being, cost of living is approximately two and a half percent, and we're going to give a five percent pay increase, I don't think I can support that. We I appreciate what our staff does, but our staff should make fair wages. They hired in, they took the job, we given a twenty-five percent pay increase, they get their steps, and I, I, I know that this is who I'm talking to, and I mean no disrespect when I say that. But our, our job is to provide the best service we can to constituents of this county, and I just think a fair increase would be two and a half percent as opposed to five percent.
What is the union wage increase, the sheer period?
Five percent.
It is five percent.
Pretty much, EMS, I think there's more than that. I remember EMS was two and a half percent or three percent.
We did two and a half percent across the board, how many staffing requests could we maybe address? Anybody look at that?
Cost statements?
Yeah. We do a two and a half percent. I really think that each individual, I think the administrator maybe should meet with each department and just say, hey, what do you, what do you, I give and take, and I know we got set wages today, we can do that for the elected, because we can always increase it, we did it with the and maybe meet with each, uh, department head, elected and non-elected.
If they were going through that budget process, then this was their ask.
Right, but that was their ask, but it's, you know, there's a conversation, you say, well, it's not a reality, you'd have a balanced budget. If you really have to have something that's on that list, what, what would you like to see happen? And see what they can do with their budgets, manipulate their money around, maybe that they can make some of these staffing. Some of these staffing, of course, happen.
I can tell you, my personal opinion, is I believe the employees deserve that five percent. And the reason why I say that is, is when I first come into the county, I was watching the county give nothing, one percent, two percent, two and a half percent, and I watched us fall way behind. Why are we doing what we're doing today is to try to keep us cut off, because if not, two years from now, we're going to have to look at a seven percent to keep us in line. And it's easier in my mind financially to stay on this top side of this curve than the bottom side. Because it's easier to budget a little bit over a long period of time than it is to try to budget a lot in a short period of time to get cut off. And when you look at And when you look at some of the wages that some of the folks made, yes, we have some employees that make high wage. What else do I have to make a lower wage? Some of the folks making the lower wage, two and a half percent increase is not very much. In their take home check, if they take all the tax and everything off, what are they going to see when they take home that check? It's not too much, and even the five percent isn't that much. And I appreciate what our employees do and the services we provide for residents. And I think it's fair that we pay our staff that does that. The public doesn't see us commissioners to deal with on a day-to-day business, take care of county business. They see our staff. And we need good staff to do the care of our county residents. That's my thing.
If, if we need to look at that case, you know, getting that, I think it shouldn't be addressed. I don't disagree with it. We've got some on the bottom that are pretty low. But when we give a five percent across the board, who's that benefit the most? People at the top.
So I still have a motion. Is there more discussion to the motion? All right, all in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, recommendation carries. So that takes care of item B. So I think we need to go back and start looking at these staffing requests. And see what we need to do. How do we want to start? Top of the list? Do you want to look at the movement of thirty-seven and a half hours to forty positions first?
I think this.
Yeah, let's do that. And then deputies, that since they're required by law.
I'm going to ask you a question, Mr. Mitchell. What are you referring to when you're saying deputies' wages from?
Is Tommy here?
Yes, I'm here.
We've been paying our deputy clerk on treasury work by the hour, correct?
They do have an hourly rate that was set last.
We have to change that.
You, as a board, have already addressed the issue that they are now salary employees. One of the issues we looked at when we were doing the budget was one of our chief deputies in the three offices. If she's no longer on a wage scale and you compare her to the other chief deputies, she's way underpaid. And so that was, that was the issue that says this one chief deputy is, if we're not following a wage scale anymore, is, is really underpaid. And that's on the letter that Tim sent that was provided this morning. That, that particular chief deputy is listed in there as one that is a more urgent matter probably that needs corrected.
So what do we set that salary to on this recommendation?
You haven't set, even though they're paid, they're considered salary employees. Last year when you did the budget, you set a wage based on wage scale. So this year, you may want to consider how do you set your chief deputy salaries? Do you want to do it on a percentage of what the elected official makes? That's why the whole talk of uniform wages was brought up. Is if you have a uniform wage of elected official, then you can set your chief deputies based on a percentage of that. Or do you want to leave them at the wage they're at? Do you want to keep them in line? That's, that's the board's decision, how you handle that, and also if they're going to want that wage.
Are the deputy salaries currently uniform?
No. I, I think two of them are really close. The salary and all that. Yeah, yeah.
So that's a debate, board, should they have, should, should we have uniform pay or should we not? That would be something discussed in the finance committee. But we can get to that. Let's take care of the thirty-seven and a half.
So looking at the sheet of paper that was passed out this morning, the victim's advocate legal assistant moving from thirty-seven and a half to forty dollars. The other one, the next would be the chief deputy register of deeds, thirty-seven and a half to forty. The chief deputy treasurer, thirty-seven and a half to forty. And the deputy treasurer, thirty-seven and a half to forty. I'll make a motion that we do that. We change those positions to forty dollars.
We're all discussing the five, for the four, correct?
That's correct. Three, now it's four that we're talking about. Is there support? All right, discussion.
When we change thirty-seven and a half dollars to forty, there will be an increase in total pay. But the rate of pay actually goes down because of the benefits. We pay the same amount. We don't want to pay any more benefits other than what FICA, you know, of benefit. I think it's a good idea.
Looking at it, it's about sixteen thousand dollars roughly. It's just a touch over sixteen thousand.
Those, those numbers, just so you are aware, Jody did calculate the FICA and the MERS, because it does affect MERS, the additional costs. So that is wages, MERS, and FICA all together.
Seventeen thousand.
Okay. Any further discussion? Go ahead.
All those going from thirty-seven and a half to forty, you want that listed all along the recommendation? Or do you want to?
That's my motion.
Would it be easier to list them individually?
During our commending, did, did we, did we discuss this with department heads? Was there someone who didn't prefer that department? And they were effective, David? And I, the other thing is, it's possible that we could, through attrition and reduction in staff, by increasing those dollars in the future.
That's what's happening in the treasurer's office. We are reducing staff from a full-time to a part-time. Asking for those additional hours to help Congress in that reduction.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Just since we're working on this sheet that was passed out this morning, let's stay right with that. Wage adjustment for the chief deputy clerk.
Madam clerk, contribute to this recommendation.
Based on the wage survey that was passed out in our budget packet, that would put her in line with the average chief deputy clerk.
Is that based on percent of the clerk's pay or is that just a number?
How was that calculated? I think that was the request that you had. I remember I, I looked back into the payroll sheet request. Is that what was, was you calculate?
Is this the position that was quite considerably less than the other two deputies?
Yes.
Okay, so that brings them all up closer.
I'm going to the recommendation that was discussed at my budget meeting with Tim, Jim, and Tanya. So whatever was listed. Okay? Okay.
Comments, Mr. Land? So, do you feel an appropriate consideration?
I think at the end of the day, probably everybody needs to be adjusted, but, you know, just what can we, again, as the board, what can you afford to do this year, what can you not afford to do? And you look at the wage scale we put together. If, or the wage study, there was several positions that we felt need to be adjusted. Other ones that, you know, it's going to be at your discretion if you want to move up or not. As the job duties of our clerk and her office change, absolutely. Look at our days for, but also. So that's kind of why the sheet was put together for you as a board to look at. And to determine which ones of those that you feel are appropriate to approve. Maybe some of them you don't approve. Maybe at the end of the day, you approve them all or?
But you know more about this than I do, so I appreciate you.
Well, it's a tough thing. When, when you're talking about our staff, and we're all people and we're human and we support each other and we want to be, you know, we want to be the best employer that we can be for the staff. It makes it very difficult to sit here, and I don't want to be in your guys' chairs at all, to sit here and discuss, as we've heard before, picking winners and losers. Who's, who's going to? At the same time, we only have so much money to work with. We know that, as our building official reported this morning, it looks like there's probably brighter days ahead for the county of starting revenue coming in. The last couple of years, battles reported, you know, we've had substantial increases in revenue coming in from values of property going up. But remember, whatever we do this year compounds, you know, throughout, throughout the history of Ossio County. When, when we give increases in wages every time now going forward, that's going to affect the budget. Again, we'll do the administration office, Tanya, we will do whatever we need to do to make the budget work of what, what the board decides. And if you decide you want to go into the fund balance to balance the budget this year, again, that, that is an option for you to consider.
Tracy, just so you're aware, that number that we see on that letter, that included the MERS and the FICA. So that might be why it doesn't look familiar to you, to one that was handed out this morning?
Yeah.
But if I look at what that wages today with a five percent, if you give the wage increase, which is on what Jody did, I think it actually puts her above the other two deputies by a five hundred bucks. So depending on how you want to, you know, how you want to pay your chief deputies, do you want to pay them equal? Do you want to? Just taking her wage today with five percent adding the wage amount request, she'll make about five hundred dollars more than the other two chief deputies. So I, I don't know how you guys want to direct that. How do you, how do you want to pay your chief deputies?
Well, they're truly salary.
Right, right.
So we should actually set their wages at a salary rate.
For all three of them, maybe.
Correct, might be the easiest.
So right now, the chief deputy treasurer and the register of deeds, if they get increased to forty hours, which you've approved, and you give them a five percent increase, they'll be at sixty-two thousand, three seventy-three, fifty-six. That, that's what the chief tre, deputy treasurer and the chief deputy register of deeds put forty hours and a five percent increase. That's what the wage will be.
Would you say that number again, please?
Sixty-two thousand, three seventy-three, fifty-six.
So is the, is the chief deputy clerk right now currently the lowest paid of the three?
Tommy?
I'm sorry, next question?
I do. When I do the math, I don't come up with the sixty-two thousand.
So right now, they make fifty-five, four seventy-seven, fifty-one.
Yeah, and when they add five percent to that?
Did you, did you add two and a half hours?
Oh, no, I did not.
Because they're only at thirty-seven, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
So the extra five hour, or five hours of pay.
Yeah.
And then the five percent.
Okay. And that's where I go. Thank you.
What did you ask again, Tracy, for the salary? Did you ask for a boost?
The total should be an adjustment of twelve thousand, I imagine, that you set the dollars. To move, to move the position up to sixty-three thousand, fifty-two dollars.
Sixty-three dollars, yes, one, she says. So what do we use?
And then we back it down.
All deputy clerks the same.
All deputy.
Chief.
All deputy. Chief, chief deputy is the same.
Right.
Of the three elected offices.
Three elected offices.
We just have to come up with the numbers.
Right, well, Tommy just goes.
I just gave you the number based on what Michelle and Al were making.
Right, we should tell the treasurer.
Chief deputy, chief deputy treasurer, chief deputy register of deeds.
That's what they're making, that's what they make currently at five percent increase with forty hours.
Sixty-two, three, seventy-three?
Yes.
Right, right. Make a motion, put it again?
If you would like to.
So we can keep working on it?
Yes.
Make a motion that we set the deputy, chief deputy register of deeds, chief deputy treasurer, and chief deputy clerk wage at sixty-two thousand, three hundred and seventy-three dollars and fifty-seven cents.
I'll second that. I'm on second. $63.73. I'll second the motion if you don't have a second.
I already have a second.
That includes the 5% that's already approved?
Yes.
That will be including?
That includes the 5%.
Does that even be referenced in the recommendation or not?
That would be $20,026.
Which includes the 5, which includes the 5%. Tim, you can reference it, that includes the 5% increase.
Discussion. Didn't pay levels used to be based on seniority, time of service, that type of criteria?
They are for all the employees except for, except for elected officials, and they're treated as an elected official now.
So then if somebody comes into one of those positions, they start right out with the max pay?
Yes.
But that was part of the state statute, correct?
Yes, yes. You guys actually approved that earlier this year to recognize the fact that they would be paid.
I don't believe they necessarily have to start. If it's a new position and it falls, I believe the board, you have the right to set that elected official's wage.
At the start of the term.
Before the term.
On a new term, you, you reset that wage, you have a new term. You can go up, but you can't go down.
You cannot, no.
On a new term.
On a new term.
On a new term, you set the new.
But, but the point I think Greg is asking is that there are no steps or anything above her deputy clerk now.
Chief deputies.
Chief deputies.
No.
Any more discussion? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no? Wage adjustment for the executive assistant.
That brings that to grade 11?
Correct, from grade nine to grade 11.
Step four.
Correct.
I make that motion. You're going to have, you're going to have a second. I'll second it.
Discussion.
This is position I'm going to throw.
Correct.
Mr. Ladd, any comment? Or is why you need to consider this?
Going back to the wage study, if we look around at other pupils doing the executive assistant type, what their, what their wage are.
How much of an increase does this involve? $2,783?
Two seven.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, $2,793.10.
Sorry, I skipped over that in the page there.
No problem. Just discussion?
Now, the 5% will be on top of this?
It's already calculated on that two, on that figure mark, maybe.
Oh, because the budget was set up with the 5% increase already?
You can say. Basically wait for that position to continue to grow down the road, otherwise Julie will be maxed out this coming year. This allows growth.
Any more discussion? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no? Wage adjustment for the... I think we need to handle these next two together, just bottom of the page. Wage adjustment for treasurer, uniform wage for clerk, wage adjustment for registered deeds, uniform with clerk. Do you want to do this or do you want to keep their wages different?
Well, I was handling the other counties. Does it, how the counties have what they're all saying? Connie said there's like one.
So last year when we, I presented it to you all, so you have, you should have any emails, but in 2024, there are already 22 counties that were doing the uniform wages with those three positions. And additionally, more counties actually have combined a couple of the clerks in the by districts together. But the ones that are doing the uniform for all three were through already 20, 22, sorry. I have the list, um, Connie said I was doing it. The other thing I'd like to point out is you just set the administrative assistant position at a higher wage than our two positions when we set it. So.
How much is that?
But yeah, that position just got set at a higher wage than what your department had positions are set at.
For them, two positions, it would be just a little over $24,000. But we're going to need to look at the registered deeds salary here regardless, because we just set our chief deputy at almost her wage.
Yeah. I'll make a motion. We couldn't, then we could unify that. It's really like the officials on the way.
I have a motion as their support. I'll second that. Discussion.
That clarified motion.
Is to have a unified wage for the treasurer, registered deed, and the clerk.
I, I think we should head that direction. I don't know that we have to do it all in one year. Just, um, and I still like the idea of, um, my suggestion for clerk to receive a stipend if the board thinks the actual work just happens, which would be revenue neutral because it would be generated by the current charge, it doesn't suffer any pain.
Since you're looking for the wage adjustment for the treasurer, registered deeds, but didn't we just address the chief deputy clerk? So we just said all three?
We're making all three be equal.
That's equal, what would he?
The clerk, registered deeds.
And what would that weigh?
That wage right now, that, based on Tracy's wage, with the 5% increase, next year it'll be $81,359.40.
What's the treasurer's?
Next year with the, with the 5%, it would be 70, right now it would be $74,380.51. So you see the total on the sheet from Tim, the letter, that included MERS and FICA costs.
Right.
Yes.
Registered deeds, do you have that?
Yep. Registered deeds makes right now, well, no way next year, which is the 5%, $68,691.11.
That's with the 5%.
That's with the 5%.
What did she make last year without the 5%?
Sixty-five percent.
Wait, this year?
Sixty, this current, sixty-five pounds. Which is $3,000 more than the chief deputy was just setting.
Right.
And the current salary for the treasurer this year?
Current salary for treasurer and the FICA of $70,838 and clerk is $77,485.
Thank you. And the treasurer does receive a 5%, a $5,000 stipend.
$5,000 stipend to do, help with budget and do whatever activities.
Yeah. I would like to see this maybe stick. If, if we want to do it all one year, which I, I still don't think we have to do it all in one year, we could do half and then maybe address it next year, but instead of $82,000, I'd rather see a steady, steady salary right at 77 and consider a $5,000 stipend, which would be like.
Tracy already made $81,000, or excuse me, $77,000. But you were, you're suggesting then she wouldn't get the 5% and you've already voted to give a 4%.
Right. You're absolutely right, because we don't have to do that. We just have to set the salary. But if we, she would benefit.
But then she would get a 5% increase.
Treasurer would benefit and certainly the registered deeds would benefit because she's been bold for several years. If the board agrees, we should have a, a uniform salary for those three elected officials.
Why should Tracy not get a 5% increase?
She would get a stipend. The only problem is if you try to set them all the same, one's getting a 5% increase and the other ones are getting probably a 10 or 12% increase. You know, it's, we're trying to make things comparable, but I don't think you can ever do that. You know?
We can do it with the chiefs, the chief deputies.
Yeah.
Again, it's one of those situations where we keep kicking the can down, I don't know what I mean.
When we did our comparables, there's a question for Mr. Ladd and Connie, I believe, did we consider counties with revenue generating comparability in other words? Was always where one mill generates approximately the same amount of money? Or did we just compare what they pay?
We compared with counties that are comparable last year ago.
It's what they pay.
As far as what revenue they receive then.
Okay. Well, yeah, but revenue, because some of them get credit as well.
We didn't compare like with Livingston County. I mean, we don't compare so many.
Well, it sounds sharp going on there.
They generate about $34,000, $35,000 a year, same as us.
And they collect $6.23, whatever it is.
Yeah, they're just collecting a lot, I suppose.
No, they don't charge all the millions, right? And all the best.
So is there any more discussion on the motion?
So we have this, this, this needs number here is what it would cost us to bring all three, all three of them, and be 20, about $25,000, $24,000, missing change. A question on the recommendation that you started, Commissioner Coster. You approved, the way you have approved setting unified salary for the treasurer, clerk, and registered deeds. Do you want that salary number in the recommendation or is that going to be a second recommendation or something?
No, it should be in the recommendation. Any further discussion?
So the salary, I mean, you from what, that treasurer just?
Should, should be the $81,359.40. Is that, am I correct, Connie?
Yes, that, that's Tracy's wage for next year at 5%.
Which, what's the treasurer and where does we do?
Right. I tend to believe yes, that has to run it back.
Right.
To set a unified salary for two positions. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no?
No.
All right. Back to the sheet now. Oops, I should, one of them. Justin, I could ask you a question. How did you put on the grant amount? Do we know yet for sure on the veteran's grant, put it in, have we put in?
Yeah, I can tell you exactly. I put it in, uh, the budget creation thing, so during the time you could see it, I printed it off too.
I did hear what you put in, Justin, but I didn't.
The total grant request was 53, meant, money we're getting is $53,642.35. Total request was, um, if you change what you have right there, because I printed it off, I don't show it loud. It was like 86, I said. I think they made the adjustments on the.
Okay.
So I sent it to Jody and I made the adjustments in the budget creation thing, so they can.
Right, so the grant that we're receiving now is $53,842.99 is what?
It's $642.
Oh, oh, yeah, thank you.
Yeah, $53,642.35.
So the question that's on the sheet is how much does the county want to add to it?
Right, and that was reduced from $57,000 to $32,980.
So we, we're required to do the $28,886. Right now in the budget we have, that we'd be putting in $57,000, so.
No, I changed.
Oh, I haven't yet. I'm waiting for the board to, oh, so you did change it to ask for $32,980.
That's correct.
So I haven't changed it yet, he says.
So it was $32,980?
And 85 cents.
That's why you're asking us budget, $32,000.
Yes.
Which is what the committee came up with. I'll make that motion.
I'll second it. Discussion?
Like I said, I think you mentioned it, it's $56,590, isn't that correct?
It's closer to $57,000.
$57,000, what's the number? $32,000, what is it?
$980.85.
Yeah.
Just any more discussion? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no? Opposed? No. All right. Back to the clerk, at two hundred dollars per precinct stipend. So ninety-two, nine thousand two hundred dollars for clerk and chief deputy programming each election.
Tracy, does that mean, would you receive money for that from the townships?
Apparently, we have a contract with the townships that goes through December thirty-first of this year. This is something that Emmy and I have done for the last couple of years, um, that it is not mandated. We've just been doing the programming of each township and precinct. And so that's something that I'm asking for, of course, is sending it off to our programmer instead of handing them to them.
Did the townships reimburse you for that? Program? If they had to have a program, would, would they have to pay the program?
No.
Tracy, you're also asking for five thousand dollars position or not? That affects outline.
So basically, that, um, request is only when there are elections that need to be programmed, um, and not on a annual basis. And so, for instance, November, we only have five precincts, so the cost would be significantly less. The amount requested is for the programming from next year for August and November.
There are forty-six precincts?
With early voting, we have eighteen precincts, and then we have additional early voting precincts that have to be programmed.
So that's per day, per precinct?
Per precinct.
That could be three elections in one year, no?
It could be up to four.
Four.
Mm-hmm.
Special election. And you're asking for how much, yeah, two hundred?
A hundred for myself and a hundred for my chief deputy to do programming.
So, what about, I, I got once you asking for five thousand more because of nine days old, that which is independent of this.
Correct.
And you're still asking for that?
Asking for it.
Okay, that's good. I mean, we just gave you some, some of it. Personally, I think that's part of doing business. But I, again, I still would entertain the five thousand dollar stipend, which, correct me if I'm wrong, that could come out of township generated revenue.
Correct.
Yeah.
Just for this one.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
So did, did I understand you right when Scott asked you a question? The townships doesn't, don't pay you that?
So then technically, no, it would not come out of that.
Okay. So if the township isn't paying you to do it, do they have to pay the, the election source? Then do they have to pay election source to program it?
We do that.
The county does.
So what would that save us by not paying the election source, because you, that saves the county money, but you do it not to pay the election source?
Yes. Bill asks, how does her election program, this is two thousand dollars, just for us.
So it's a thousand dollars per precinct?
You can look at that, right, but it says, it's one of the things that really helping precincts from there. Um, yeah, okay.
So if you can do that, you know, we're looking at, it would probably cost a ton of, two thousand dollars.
It depends on what they're ready to turn. We've done the last, well, I've been here since two thousand sixteen, so we've been doing two thousand sixteen as a courtesy.
What about, does it cost county something similar?
Um, she does something a little bit different. She actually prepares like ballot, and she does the programming. I'm not trying to do the programming as far as needing the actual ballot and the specifications that are applied on the ballot. The programming that I'm doing, I get a flash drive from the election source, and I take all of the tabling programming, the voter system programming, getting ballot on demand, or getting early voting tabling machine, and I put the programming at each individual machine, and then all of their poll worker parts, their technical parts, the voter parts. So it takes about an hour per precinct to program, test it, clear the machines, and get each precinct's direct.
So even if you didn't do it, the townships don't cover that cost, the county covers that cost?
Correct.
As I read the board.
So what, the, the money that the townships and the cities pay towards the election, what do those help cover?
The early voting site. So the nineties of early voting, staffing that entire site for those nine days, um, getting the equipment ready, um, the reporting that needs to be done to the state, the reimbursement from the state, um, even for those precincts that are doing early voting from their home, to get reimbursement for their election inspectors for their, for those nine days, it all has to run through the county. So my paperwork increased significantly last year, and being available off free elections, nine days, Saturday to Sunday. So that's what the contract with those townships includes, is for me to plan those nine days of early voting.
Anybody care to make a motion? If not, we will move on.
I just think I need more information, and I guess, I don't clearly understand, I mean, that's something we can address, because you know, how do you budget, what if you have an election that comes up because a split decides to move on or hold it?
County responsible, either can it, or there's nothing, the body panels are going to cost it as to.
To that, that ending. So I, you know, I don't understand all that, I think, I, I mean, it's something we could definitely look at, address, I'm not sure that has, but I think there needs to be something there. I just would like to have more information, I think we're all.
I can, I can provide more information and comparables and costs.
Yep.
Absolutely.
All right.
All right. Clerk increased, increased the salary by five thousand for non-mandated early voting responsibilities. Physician had prior increase in January of two thousand twenty-two of five thousand dollars.
I don't think clerk is the only person that's had an increase in point time, too.
Probably not, to look back through.
On that side.
Mr. Mitchell, this will be your opportunity.
I know. I don't know if I want to go with five thousand or less. We, um, do give the treasurer five thousand dollar stipend, I don't know, comparable. I realize there's a ton extra time, what we clerk originally signed up for. I will make a motion that we, um, give a stipend of five thousand dollars, which would be revenue neutral to accounting, because it will, it will come from the townships' money that they're paying in for the nine days of reporting. Will that cover all the current expenses? Tracy, that, that covered that, or do you have to increase?
No, that would, that would be fine.
Would the township fee be increased?
No.
No, okay.
Okay, thank you. Discussion?
Sir? Were we increasing this five thousand dollars a year, even though we're not running voting every year?
We have voting almost every year.
So.
And there's, uh, there's a contract with the township. So, um, last year it generated four thousand. This year they generate crank four thousand based on the terminology listed in the contract, it's prepared by the county committee.
Okay.
And so, um, it is.